Hello, how are you? Are you here? Hello, hello, hello. Coming on in two seconds, just checking of the microphone. Hello, hello. Hello, how are things? Super pumped, I see there's so, so many people out here today, so this is... It is hot, it's hot outside and it's hot inside here at the headquarters in Oslo, Norway. There's a lot of things happening and I'm really excited about the preparations we've done for today.
Recording in progress.
There are some significant advances to the platform, to the team, to the whole thing. We're gonna go through it. We will, I think we should just start by me sharing the presentation. There will be multiple people speaking here today. We have a great new creative team, they will all be here, five, six people. We have different, different corporate people, we have a lot of stuff. So not everything will be in the presentation because time constraints, as always. Our ambitions are always great. This will be recorded and it will be distributed and the presentation will be distributed. And we will not have any questions at the end of the presentation today. The reason for this is a very extensive presentation and we will rather hold a separate AMA later. So let's get started and I will start sharing my keynote and we get started. There is a lot of good things today and we keep it clean. There are no videos that will disrupt your, your sort of viewing quality and we will keep moving. So this is a tone hall, we are now, we haven't been speaking to you for a while. The reason is we've been hard at work, we have been traveling, we have been closing deals. We have been doing a lot of business at the side of the public channel. So we have had great sales and we've done a lot of private deals and we are really stationing this company. At the same time, we must say that it has been a very, how should I say? Turmoil over the past six months in the market. I mean, we had the sort of January dip and then came the Ukrainian invasion. Then we have all the crypto that's in an inflational economy and all what's happened. Now we see that's kind of stabilized and we're looking forward now. We are very, very positive to what we are doing and we are very pleased to see that actually our sustainable business model, it doesn't yield maybe a percent or two a day, but it will yield a lot, a lot of money and it's sustainable. And we have been working hard and persistently and we are pushing forward. So that's, that's really an accomplishment to the whole team and everyone that's believing in what we are doing. From a macroeconomic perspective, the markets could not be better. The gaming market has doubled over the past two years and it's just exploding. And there are many things we're gonna do comments too. So the agenda today gonna be, we're gonna talk about the game. It's an extensive extension to the game we are presenting to you today. And we're gonna talk about the creators and we're gonna talk about the corporate finance situation. So we have people coming in on each one of these sections. Stian and Mina will be hosting the gaming section and I will be hosting all those sections. But I will bring in, in the creator, we will bring in quite a few people to present themselves. We have a lot of great people around the globe. When it comes to the corporate, we will have our head of corporate, Lauren Berg, from coming in and together with Stian and Andrea, we will discuss the corporate situation, about listing, about all the corporate financial activities we are doing in order to push this forward. So let's get started with the game. Many people think that we just have one game and that's a kind of a starting point when people ask, okay, when is the game launching? We're gonna answer all these questions, by the way, today. We got basically two questions, when is the game launching, when is the token listing? We're gonna answer all that today. So that's why we, we, we will not have a lot of questions related to that. So the game is the most important part of what we're doing. We are a game company, a gamification company. And now we are, we are taking it to a even better level than we have done before. And we, we're gonna get started and we're gonna, gonna see what, what the game is all about. It's to empower billions of sports and entertainment fans all over the world to share their passion and to connect and to play and have real fun. That's what we're doing with the game. We are taking a position in the market that's not being fulfilled, it's a void space. And we are doing that with our game that you know very well. That's the core gaming mechanics of what we do, the swiping left or right and that keeps going. That, that's still the, the thing. We have, we are doing this within the sports and entertainment. We have an initial big focus on football, I will get back to that. And we also have other sports coming and we have the entertainment sector. So all these are our content, sort of, that, that's the content, that's the, that's the fandoms, that's the passion we are approaching with the game concept we have. So the game consists of multiple sections or multiple sort of segments. At the very center, you have the game mechanics. That's all the technology, the platform that makes it playable. It's the algorithms we create, it's the rules that we have, it's all the things that's more or less beneath the surface. You don't see it, that's what makes the game, is the code base, it's everything. Then you have all the content, which is the key word for game mechanics, it needs to be playable. And by playable, it needs to be exciting, it needs to be good and it needs to be achievable. It needs to be, there is a balance, it can't be too difficult and can't be too easy. When it comes to the game content, that's what's being pushed into the game mechanics and to the game experience. So that's where we have the passionate, the fanatical content and that, that's a huge part of our game because our game is based on a lot of content, a lot. Then we have the game experience, which is the compulsive part, which is the app you have in your pocket, in your hand, that you really wanna eat, where you really wanna get into the screen. That's how you feel excited. That's where we use, the game mechanics are of course tightly connected to the game experience, but the game experience also involves some other elements apart from the core gaming. It involves the social experience and it involves a whole new level of experience that we are launching today. We're gonna show you all of our work, not all, but some of our work files on what we're doing and why we maybe haven't opened the gate yet. Because we have done a lot of work and we're gonna go through that now. So from the game content side, we have tons of content already prepared. We have more than twenty-three thousand pictures ready, edited, we have massive access to imagery. So that, that's, that's, remember, two, twenty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two to be accurate as of today. That's a massive library. We're gonna push it to maybe ten times more, but I mean, this is a massive accomplishment because we are editing every picture we are using in the game. Then we move into the questions. We have twenty-five thousand and forty-two questions verified as of today. It's a massive, when you look on all the combinations, we are into not only billions, not tens of billions, but hundreds of billions, if not trillions of combinations, we can be, that. That's divided into the three difficulties. So we have twelve thousand three hundred and ninety-five questions coming about players, individual players. We have six thousand seven hundred and three questions about clubs and we have five thousand nine hundred and forty-five and racing past questions for World Championship twenty-two twenty-two, starting in November in Qatar. So we are doing all the thirty-two nations that's in the World Championship, it's coming, it's beautiful. It's, it's a massive content library, only the pictures and the questions. This is where we investing large amount of money. Many people think that this is not part of the game. This is a major part of the game, it's the whole thing. This is the hotel room in our hotel, this is our product. Then we have the NFTs that we presented many, many times. We have published hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven NFTs and we have sold forty-three thousand and eighty-five, that's twenty-four percent. That's also a massive accomplishment. Imagine, we are handling on the service side, on the, on the management side, administrative side, hundred and eighty-two thousand NFTs. It's not like just walking the park, try finding hundred and eighty-two thousand files in your Dropbox and they all have maybe five or ten gigabytes and that's the final product. And before that, you probably have hundred gigabytes for each with different designs and things. We also have them in videos and we have them on IP, IP, IPFS, sorry for that. So when it comes to the game content, we have not only invested a lot of money, but a lot of effort, a lot of time, we have invested in this game content for years, actually. We have been adding and adding and adding and we have a very clever team doing this. We have expanded the team the past months, so we are now having, as you see here, nine people dedicated to deal with this, more or less dedicated to deal with this. We have a great team that Magnus and Gitta is managing out of Jakarta, that doing tons of football content. We also do football content here at the headquarters. We have, you have Met Martin, a football expert before, we have hired Mats. He has been, he's completely a football crazy nerd and he's even worse than Martin, if it's possible. And he's worked with FIFA, he worked with a lot of organizations, he's been instrumental, he's educated with master in sports and football, he's working here structuring everything and make sure that everything is, is, is going well. Then we have the Indonesian team that's coming out, has been employed and working out of our office in Jakarta. And we have Runa working from our facilities in Norway at the moment. And he's extremely clever when it comes to pictures and done a great, great job in, in structuring all these tens of thousands of pictures and NFTs. So we have a game content crew working and we are expanding it. Well, that's the game content. So now look on the game mechanics. The game mechanics composed basically of, of sort of three, there are more, more things to it, but we know to talk about three things. So we have the asset side, which you are familiar with from the loot box, it's the, it's the lives, it's the passes, it's the, it's the free, the free pass or freezes. These things that make up aids for the game or two game tools, that's what they use in the tool. All side of these are actually part of that, it's the asset thing. That, that, that creates, that, that enable you to play or enable you to enhance your gameplay, actually. Then we have the game modes that we have presented many times before. We started with, with, we have, we have the main game Battle Royale, we have the balls and we have the other one, we started with as a kind of free, free test game. We are changing that a little bit today and it's becoming much, much cooler. So then we have the features like custom game, like stories and all other stuff that we, that we have. So let's move on, that's the principle of the game mechanics. And here comes some great news, we have a huge team. We have had this team for a while, we have expanded the team, but all this game, game specification, all this game mechanics, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. And Alexander has done a great, great job on developing the concept we are now envisioning you a little bit later today. It's that extension of what we had before. So Alexander has been with us one and a half year, he comes from Google, great, great guy, have a lot of experience. We have hired Ashish as the platform manager. He has fifteen years with Ericsson and IBM, is a master of technology, working together with our team in India. We have the great team, you see about twenty-five people coming and going a little bit, depending on the tasks. Then we have Magnus, works in Norway, he works, experienced with Sony Gaming, he's an expert in animations and in effects inside. And we have Runa, is also material part because he's a profound gamer and participate in this. So this team has been working for years together, so that's good. And now we have a new thing to, to tell you, we have hired KPMG to be our platform auditor. They started their work earlier this month and they will deliver monthly reports to the public, to the public. So everyone, you and everyone will get a monthly report from KPMG about our technology platform. I don't think there are any one in this industry that's doing that. So we worked a long time to, to land that agreement and it's, it's not free either. It's costing a little bit, but we think it's worth it because it will make, give us huge credibility to how the platform is, is composed, how the, the, the algorithms and everything is working, how the compensation plan is working, how the game is working and that we actually have a game. A lot of people ask us, do you have a game, what do you have, okay? All this will be answered by KPMG, that's the best we can get. It's one of the top auditing firms in the world, there are four big ones. There are Ernst &amp; Young, Deloitte, PWC and KPMG. We choose KPMG, so that's good. Of course, we have all our teams in India, like you've seen in all the presentations. So it's a great team that's working on the game mechanics and the platform itself. So let's flip over to the game experience because that's the main thing for the end user. For you and probably for me and for everyone that's playing the game is how you are, how you are entertained by, 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 by coming into this game. So we shown this to you before, now we, have looked at those frames, they are really cool. We spent a lot of time on details there, little bit nerdy, but looking good. And it's coming in the new presentations now coming these days, it's amazing stuff. So we'll send you videos coming. We had this, you could play for, for prices. Look at that beautiful cruise ship, wow, it's really enticing. And, but there is a void here, there is a void. Billions of dedicated sports and entertainment fans, they don't have this community. You can have leaderboards and you can share it in social media, but we lack something. We lack something that gives an edge, something we see, I will say we have seen what we are doing because what we are doing is unique, but we've seen this virtual communities like Sandbox, like Axie, the kind of coming. I, I, I got a message, sorry for that. So we, we, we see we need something more. And what we need is a virtual world that's accommodating the biggest fandoms and engage billions of fans so they can really find fame, fortune and do the fanatical swipe. So this, we have presented this before, the fandom metaverse, but we never gone into detail how we're gonna do it. And now we have today, we are launching this, how should I say, presentation about the fandom metaverse. I will say one thing, this is a conceptual architecture presentation. This is a comprehensive thing we have been working on for quite a while. We have been working out of, from a strategic point of view and we have been working from a technical production point of view, trial and error. And you're gonna see, so this is, it can have a big under construction label on what we are showing you now. It's not the final product, we have a lot of great people working on this, so I gotta, I gotta go through. So the idea is that we create a whole virtual world with real buildings and each of these buildings, they are connected to a fandom. You see here Real Madrid in the front, that means you can on your mobile phone, you can enter the building and you can play the Real Madrid game and there is a lot of perks to it. So we call it the Fan Tower and it's divided into bronze, silver, gold, platinum and diamond levels. There are hundred levels in each tower, they have the same division. So what you, what you do, you can enter this building and you can play your way to the top. When you get to the diamond level, you become owner of the building. So it's not that easy to get there, we have some really pretty good algorithm. So the way we have constructed these algorithms is that a regular player needs to spend somewhere between hundred to two hundred hours to get to the top and then it becomes really steep because each of the five levels have twenty sub-levels, sub-levels. So it becomes very steep from the eightieth level when you become diamond to get to the hundredth level. You will get ownership during that trip. On the way up, if you're spending hundred, two hundred, three hundred hours gameplay, you will be spending money, you will be spending super to buy, you don't need, but most people will do for the passes, for the freezes, for lots of extra things. And the cool thing, we don't go into too much detail today, but every level has their own store. So there are perks on each level that you cannot get if you haven't played to get there. So this is a whole new way of engaging fans in a virtual community, in a virtual world, in a fandom metaverse that's the world have never seen before. We are creating this from scratch, we are creating these towers for the main football clubs. They're gonna have what we call Football City, Football Avenue. We're gonna have Hollywood, we're gonna have the Music Avenue. There's a lot of things coming later to this, it's a huge thing. So our cool thing that we are doing on the conceptual architecture is that when you're looking at clubs, they are fighting, like here Manchester United fighting towards Liverpool. So we are amending the height of the building based on how many fans that's inside and how good they are playing. So that's a dynamic building body. We, we design everything from scratch, we're gonna show you a little bit about it. So everything here will be dynamic, so there will be a fight between the clubs, who has the biggest building? It's really cool, it's really cool, it's never been done before. That's why it takes a little bit of effort to do it, it's really cool. And when we invented this, we, we, we wanted to see another level of engagement. So people can, okay, you know that people like to work together, okay, we bring in people, we play more, we get our building higher, we can, we can do a lot of things. And we're using also a little bit of mechanics from Monopoly, one of the best board games ever. There's a lot of things coming in. So this is what we are, what we are, what we are creating. We have employed an architect, she is a she, Vina, she is actually from, from Qatar, working out of Doha. And that's probably why we have a little bit of this modern architecture because in that area is a lot of modern architecture. So what we have here is the skeleton of what we are creating. We are creating a whole virtual world based on real world architecture. And we are creating every building from ground up, every street, everything is created. It's a long, it's not a long process, it is heavy machinery or computers do it with rendering and you need a lot of creativity to do this. So this will set us apart from competition because we own the whole freaking world we are creating. We own it, we control it and not only that, we are creating unique buildings for every club or for every fandom. So here we see Barcelona and here we see it in a contextual, where we're putting it together like a skyline. It's really cool, we have all this of course in vivid colors. We are showing you this a little bit reduced today. Beautiful buildings with a lot of details and the thing is, this is not a picture. This is 3D polygons, this is, this is mathematics that create these buildings. So we are able to have this building crack, sweat, grow, bend over. We can do whatever we want with this building, imagine the creativity we can have. Imagine what we can do when you can pop buildings next to your shoulder and you see they're growing. Wow, that's gonna be Nice United versus Liverpool, FC Barcelona versus Real Madrid. The fight, the heat is on, really cool. So a little bit how we work and why this is a little bit time consuming. We are creating it from scratch, like we said, here we see how we start modeling. We start modeling and we want to have a little bit of futuristic, futuristic design. I mean, many of these could be all brick buildings or could be cartoons, but we don't wanna have them. We have a lot of ideas, not only ideas, we have a lot of concrete plans about these buildings. How they're gonna work, how they're gonna move, how they're gonna be. This is a really massive enhancement to the game we are doing. So here you see all the rich, how we start doing it, this is actually in black and white. We start doing all the details in a creative manner. We also zoom in and go into detail on the building and we are putting brand, branded things into the building. And that's how we're gonna catch the brands because the brands will have their own buildings, of course they will have. So here is some of the things we want to achieve, this is just working, this conceptual architecture is not the final thing, we're gonna have much more interaction, much more cooler thing. These are the entry sort of starting points. So you can imagine when each of these building, we can label as a board A P O T club because we have hundreds and thousands of buildings as we move on. Each of them is a fandom itself. Only the Manchester United building probably gonna be tens of millions of people or players and they can fight their way and when you get to the diamond level, when you get to the diamond level and yes, if you have a diamond pack, you are able to start playing on the diamond level, you will become one of the owners of the building. And that means that everything that takes place in the building or staking will also stake to you. And we are coming with not only the NFTs we already have, they are already connected and staking and everything. This will include millions of NFTs because every building will have its own NFT scheme and it will be on every level. You're able to buy yourself into imagery on the wall, you are able to enter into galleries, you are able to, to buy merchandise we create, we are using ripples, we cost nothing to create an NFT. We're gonna, you can be able to buy the jersey from Ronaldo, you're gonna be able to buy the moustache of Freddie Mercury or the glass of Solotanja. It's amazing what's coming in here. We are also combining it with, with true avatars that you will get free when you're joined. So this is part of the whole marketing strategy. Why should people join? Because we have the best product out there. That's the Liverpool and Manchester United, of course you can see we're using the colors, Real Madrid, Barcelona. This is just rough examples, it's not the final render at all, but it's, it's a very good example, what we're doing. We are not only doing it with clubs, we are doing it with famous people. Brad Pitt versus Leonardo DiCaprio. They have a lot of followers, they have a lot of people that wanna, wanna play games about their movies or music or whatever. And we of course have Lady Gaga, Britney Spears. These, these are not tuned for, for mobile, but we, we have a whole concept around how we do this and that's why we create everything from scratch because we have the, it's based on vectors and polygons. So we are able to really massage it inside the mobile. So we are able to, to really massage it inside the mobile. It's gonna be really cool. And like I said, Brad, here we created the Emirates Tower and the Nike Tower with a Nike swooshing goal. Do you think, uh, people will enter Nike to play about, in example, Nike's, uh, we, we do questions for Nike. About their history, about their products, or even about athletes they, they are sponsoring. And they will bring in and you will get free tokens from Nike to enter other kind of games or you can even win prizes inside the, the Nike Tower. There are tons of things. And I was just in the United States speaking to one of the biggest leisure groups, uh, in the world. Leisure and gaming groups and, uh, uh, we have a really, really cool concept here. So. This is unique stuff. It doesn't exist out there. And it will probably not exist from any team in the very nearby future because this is something. It takes not only creativity to, to do it, it takes a lot of resources to create it because doing this three D modeling. Is, uh, comprehensive stuff. This is where we wanna end up. And this is again just a mock-up. Uh, we gotta have this whole city in color. It's gonna be really cool. It's gonna be different to the heights on the building. There are tons of things. But there is more. We haven't forgot our game, our game modes. They fit into this. So. Inside each building, you will be able to fight inside that fandom. That's our free game where you're just fighting to rank up inside a building and you can rank up. Inside as many buildings you want. If you wanna. Become a diamond in Manchester United and a diamond in FC Barcelona, it's okay. You just need to play. That's, that's okay. The only, it is free to play inside the buildings and there's no prices. There could be prices in terms of token and, and N F Ts and stuff like that. That, that, that's inside the building. Then you have the battles which happens outside the building. That's where you do the battle royal. Where you swipe to win prizes. And then you have on the corner, you can fight with other people. That's the brawls. Or you can head over to, in example, uh, a famous tower and you can fight that seller inside his own tower. And they will make money from it. Coming to that, coming to that. There is a lot of good things today. So that's. That's the meetavers. And we have the park. Of course, you need to meet other people. So you need to enter in there. We have the social aspect of it. So let's say you play yourself to the diamond level of, oh. Manchester United, you will be able to connect in private channels with other diamond members. That means you know a lot about Manchester United. You will have posting privileges inside the Manchester United, uh, communication channel. There is a separate streaming channel inside each tower. That you will be able to join and have different privileges as you move, uh, up, up the ladders. And you will of course meet other people. And this is also a good way of segmenting, uh, how you meet other people. You will have your own castle, your own home, where you are able to expose your own N F Ts and your own stuff, your own thing. Uh, this we are still developing, so it's not finished. At the same, the store is coming, of course, there is a. Big store in this, uh, city and inside every building, there is a store actually. And you will be able to buy that different things. There are also convenient, uh, other stores, uh, like big, big shopping centers. Where you can buy different things. So, uh, we are highly commercial. And this is also where we have now, for those who you haven't seen, we have changed the legend to platinum and the origin to diamond to be. More aligned with the gaming world of bronze, silver, gold, platinum and diamond. All the big companies have. So, uh, we have brand venues. You saw, uh, I showed you, uh, in example, uh, Nike. There are so many we can do. There are tons of things. We are bringing about aboard some really new people. That will take this to a whole new level and you're gonna meet them shortly. So. Everybody's asking when it start launching. They start launching in September and will be fully launched by November when the World Cup championship in football starts. So there is a lot of work we're doing now and there is a lot of work still to be done. But we have already done a lot of work and we've prepared and we will September start rolling this up. And it will be rolled out gradually. And it will create massive interest from the, the, the. Fan groups around the world. And we have now the connections and the power to reach them all. And I'm gonna talk about that very shortly. So this is connected, this, this strategy. Is coupled and connected and aligned with what we're doing on, uh, other, other parts. So. We have a great team that's working on this. We want to expand it. We have, Vaidya been with us for a long while, Runa, like we spoke about. We have Markle doing stuff. Very good guy. And we have, uh, the, the architect actually, uh, Dina, coming from, uh, is a she, coming from, from Qatar. It's very cool. She's very diligent, do great, great work on, on these things. And we're gonna expand that team also, but. It's very difficult to, to, to expand that team. Uh, not difficult, but it's, it's. It's, it's laborious. You need to, to bring people up to speed and they are doing a great job. It's better to spend a little bit extra time and to do it in fashion and the end product will be just simply compelling. That's what we want. So that goes the game. I'm not gonna ask for any questions because I'm not gonna answer any questions to it. I think we have answered everything. The key takeaway. Massive improvements to the fandom metaverse. The whole gaming engine we already had programmed and spent. Millions of dollars on content and mechanics is fitted into it. And it's launching starting in September. Okay, so that's what we're just saying. Uh, one second, just a little Coca-Cola. Then we move on to the creators where fortune favors the bold. Well, we have hundred thousand members connected to our platform. Well, a little bit more. We have fifty thousand token holders. And we have some great people working with us. And some people come, some people go. That's the, that's the life in business. And, uh. What we do with our creator scheme is creator is the new affiliate, word for affiliate is new. Word, best word in the whole crypto, in the whole gaming space, creators is, is a, is a. Is a kind of industry term. So with the creator program, we empower everyone to make money from their creations and connections. Simply, that's what we're doing. We empower everyone to make money. And we do that to a series of loot boxes. We change the name on premium to entry. We have the bronze, silver, gold, change the name on legend to platinum and origin to diamond. We have a complete lineup with different perks that enables you to, uh, make money with us. And that's what it's all about. It's about building, uh, framework. And for you, we have a framework, a modern business model that will let, let you, uh, partake in our business. Already at this stage while we're building the network, you're earning a little bit of commission, a little bit, quite much actually. Way too much. And then when we open the game, the flute gates of the game. Those who have been active and contributed, they will, they will be largely rewarded for many, many years to come. So the bonuses that we have there is creator bonuses. And, uh, those are really good. Like I said, it's divided into follower bonus, staking bonus and pool bonus. And we also opened another tranche of the pool. We expanded the pool without diluting the, the initial, uh, cool holders. So we, we have done that. We're gonna get more information coming, but we have been working with. Lot of new teams and we have been informing and keeping, keeping a, a lot of stuff moving in the background. So we haven't had all the energy, uh, to, to be out and distributing everything, but we're gonna get that to the market now. So. The creative bonuses works perfectly. We are now working heavily on redesigning the back office. It's been a little bit more, uh, obstacles than we. Because it's very complex. It's very complex. And we, it's only a few of us that can really say yes or no on a, on a lot of things. But we, we're starting now on Mumbai. And hopefully within a few weeks, we will have that finalized. So that's the creative bonuses. But we need more. There is a huge need for more. Because we have entered into an agreement with some people, lot of people. It's actually a well. A well-established company with more than twenty-five people, been, been in the football industry for more than twenty years. They are licensed FIFA agents. They have access. They are now working on a deal for us. Where we close, um, I cannot disclose any names. Uh, there are this close, uh, and this. And this closed party with nearly six hundred million active users. So. More than five, more than half a billion. Half a billion football fans are connected to this source. So that's one thing we are lacking. It's very close to closing. We have other leagues and clubs coming in. And we're gonna speak a little bit about that later. Uh, we're bringing in, uh, in example, we will have Shelley coming in from U S. She works a lot with the basket teams and all that. She will tell you all about that. And Cian will also fill in on this. But we need more. We need much more. We need something for the stars. We want the superstars to really engage. And to do that, they don't understand. Actually, nobody understands. So a binary is working. They want a very simple and predictable and solid solution. So we created it. We create. We have the ability to do what we want with our platform. And we are creating a product now that will bring the superstars beyond what they get. From in example YouTube and TikTok in revenue. This is crazy.
I just wanna add, add something here, uh, as well. Okay. We've been sitting and meeting now and also with, with, from Amanda and Shelley. They opened some, some doors that we, we never could believe. We are now talking with people that this is so big. It's like. And you see, they are so impressed. They are crazy about the platform. And when we now talk, you know, TikTok, they, the, 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 the big players, they use TikTok, YouTube, Instagram. And they get paid two to three months later. And we get paid in two seconds. They are on fire. You know, the meetings we have now, it's like. Shelley will also explain. But the things we have now, all the big pay we are talking about, wanna join this. So, so, so we have something that's really, really exciting. That's why I'm so super pumped now.
Rest your case. I know you're excited. Thank you. We're gonna speak about that shortly. Okay? So the stars, we need something for them. And that's where we are happy to introduce a whole new loot box that's beyond everything. It's called Star Loot Box. And you can't buy it. It's not, uh, you cannot buy it. You are only invited to get it. And that loot box is only for superstars with hundred thousand or more followers. You need to have a proven track record in doing that. And this, they will get a flat ten percent from everyone in their entire network. Whether it's direct or not direct, they will have ten percent. That's what they get. If they engage in games. Let's for argument's sake Ronaldo, we use, always use Ronaldo. Uh, now it's with Binance, so we probably, you probably, we need to do a deal with Binance here. So. If we do games, Ronaldo creates his own game and he gets his followers to play it, he will earn additional ten percent. And if he create an N F T scheme and we create it for him, he will earn ten percent of the revenue. And if you do campaigns, which we need to do, like promotional campaigns and stuff like that, to get into. Really get into the media and catch fire, he get another ten percent. So basically, if he has own games, do campaigns, he will earn thirty, up to thirty percent. If you do, in addition, will learn on the N F Ts. So up to thirty percent. Then twenty, thirty percent will earn. And that's a very simple proposition for the stars. Okay, how much do we will I make? Ten percent of everything. That's it. Easy to calculate. Every star can do it. Every agency understands it. Then we have the match. So if Ronaldo brings in Messi, Slav, um, whatever. He will earn ten percent on all his direct matches. Period. That's it. So. If somebody is very cool at, uh, let's say Manchester United, one guy is recruiting all the others. He will learn from everyone else. Simple system, we have it already developed. It's already there with, with, with what we have. And it can become huge amounts of money. And this is where we're gonna excel. Because the other, uh, channels like YouTube, et cetera, when you start looking into it, it's not that well paid. Could be, but it's all pending. We're not, there, there's not only the Kardashians out there. There are a lot of other everyman influencers, but. There is a lot of people with hundred K or more followers out there. And those we are attacking or, uh, addressing with this scheme. So if you look on the financial example, uh, on the total bonus here, that's based on hundred thousand paying players that spends a dollar a day. Which is nothing, absolutely nothing. So, uh, basically, uh. A dollar a day is not much. We, we just got some, some figures from, uh, from, uh. From, uh, Indonesia, uh, it was, it was a research and a kind of analysis. Done by the Football Association of Indonesia. There are fifty million people in Indonesia that want to spend seventy dollar a month. On, on, on merchandise related to football, not on, on gaming, but on jerseys, on. On matches and all this kind of thing. Massive amount. So that puts Indonesia to a more than. In excess of forty billion dollar football market here. Massive. So. Look at this. If you have a million followers, you have ten percent conversion, et cetera, et cetera. You're able to actually earn. Seven and a half million dollar a year on hundred thousand followers that's paying. Imagine the big stars, if they have ten times that, twenty times that. Can become a really, really cash cow for, for the, for the, for the, the, the stars. Or across the board. So imagine if we have hundreds or thousands of these stars generating. And, uh, you can ask, how is this affecting the other loot box revenue? This will be deducted before the other loot boxes are rewarded commission. So this is a kind of a marketing expense. It's a kind of a, yeah, let's call it a marketing transactional expense. This is a product that's really cool and it will bring tons of revenue to the platform and to the other loot boxes. I won't say they're losing out. I will say they are winning because if you put these horses in front of the carriage. That carriage will be huge and it will go fast. These guys needs to make big money. And that's what we're creating for. Simple star. Well, that's the star. That's the star. And that's what we're doing now. And there's a reason why we're doing that. Because we're looking at the creative team we have. We have two, uh, in particular, two new guys, Lou and Jason. We signed on, we signed on more here, as you see. They're coming in with, uh, more than twenty years of football experience. Lou has more than twenty-five years of football experience. He's a licensed FIFA agent. He's been instrumentally involved. You can name all the top clubs in the world. He's been there. He's, uh, been partnering with, with them, uh, there's no point even mentioning because he's been there. Where Rich Manchester United, Liverpool, Juventus, FC Barcelona, Real Madrid, he's been in business with all of them. And they are, Jason and Lou are now working hard to establish the whole. Uh, uh, connections and deals. They are dealmakers when it comes to this. Very strong addition to our creative team and they have tons of experience. And, uh, we're really looking forward to the results and I think we within. Within not too long time, we will be able to announce some really cool partnerships. That's really cool. So.
They also, they, 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 they also did the, the transaction for, uh, David Beckham to Galaxy. So you know, this is big, big guys.
This is the big guys. And then we have Dr. Aaron. Dr. Aaron is a very particular guy, works out to Germany. He's a lifelong branding specialist and, uh, marketing guy. He's been working with top, uh, top brands like Puma, Adidas. You, you have more, Cian, you know more about him?
Yeah, Wolf again.
Yeah, he's been into the big league in Germany and he's working. And he's working with, and we work with our brand, uh connect us to the brands. He is responsible for creating the whole brand approach. We are doing a whole revamping of how we do the spaces and the brands. Um it's really gonna be really comprehensive stuff. We're not gonna talk about it today, but that's where Dr. Aaron and Hyder will work together. Okay, we have Warren here. Uh we will speak to Warren uh towards the end. We're not gonna spend too much time on Warren. He's a crypto specialist and investor and works as overhead of corporate finance. Then we have the one and only Stian Alex, of course, and Stian Andrea. His cousin or brother or whatever. Where are you connected? Okay, then we have uh all all the other creators, the other leaders we're working closely with on a daily basis is John. John Klensch, everybody knows John. Uh should we bring John live here and hear what he has to say? How do we do that? Ask to unmute. You need to unmute yourself, John.
Hello?
Hi, John.
Hi, Andreas.
How are you doing?
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you. And yourself?
I'm very good. I'm very excited because we are on a very good note. Do you think we're gonna make any grain beans with these things?
I am very, very excited about the news of KPMG. I already knew about it, but. The extensive information you provided with us today, that is really nice because uh I know the big four very well and. That's for me really big news, that I can relate to, really good.
Okay, so yeah, we um it's been a little bit uh, how how should I say? It's been a period where we have done a lot of changes and things when it comes to the comp plan. In twenty twenty-two or in late twenty twenty-one, now we are all settled. We're not gonna twist it around anymore. We have done a lot of transactions uh over the past months and we are moving forward. How do you see? If from your perspective, you've been with us on this uh compensation thing for for a while? How do you see the next next months from your perspective and how will you contribute to our growth?
Okay, so well, I as probably everybody knows that has been around here for a long time. I created the original compensation plan, which definitely was very powerful and they got a lot of accolades all over the world for that. But the evolution of the plan as it is today, it it is uh it's simpler to understand, it's simpler to communicate. And actually, my original plan was maybe a bit complicated for even industry insiders to comprehend in the first place. And the plan as it is now, it is easier. So people can explain it, as I call it, on a napkin presentation in a cafe. Or meeting someone. And this simplicity will definitely contribute to. To the more fast growth of of the project. So I think that's a good thing to simplify things. I made things rather complicated and some other great minds at the company made it simple, so.
Okay, John, so you're positive and you are supportive and you're ready?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And uh I would like to. Uh in the next few months also to teach people who want to be taught about. Tap routing, which I believe is a skill uh next to follow-up. That is uh something people should master to build successful network marketing businesses. So that's something that I want to bring on to the table for those who want to learn that. And uh.
Okay, we will get you on the air shortly. Uh that. Okay, thank you, John. Thank you for being with us. Uh we're gonna bring up, uh we're gonna bring up Amanda. Just one second. Find the right button here. There we have. Hello, Amanda?
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. The question is, how are you?
I am very well. I am really, really excited by what we've just seen. Um so it's one thing having a. To know about it, but now to actually visualize it, to have the sneak peek. And yeah, look, I'm very excited. I'm feeling really, really blessed. Um to be here, to be welcomed as part of this amazing team moving forward. I was really, really excited by the concept when I saw it initially in those early years. Um now, it just hurts my head to think about everything that's gonna happen, how amazing it's gonna be. I'm so impressed by how far um the project has come. Look, I just wanna accolade to you guys for your tenacity, your commitment to your vision. Um and I'm just so looking forward to everything that is gonna come in the future moving forward.
We are also very grateful having you here and you've known us for a couple of years. And now you really, over the past three, four months, you really. Uh excelled and brought in a lot of new members, a lot of stuff. And how do you see you building? I mean, you have built huge uh huge communities before and you have a background in finance and. Been in the banking and finance sector for several years and educated into business administration. So how do you see the 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 business side from your side and how are you gonna grow the community over the next? Yeah, next short, short period, the next days, next hour.
The next days, the next hours. Yeah, look, I think it's interesting times, definitely interesting times. Uh particularly in the crypto space. And I guess um for myself, yes, having, you know, a bit of time now in the network marketing space. And looking at the going on right now, I really wanted a project that was a real world project that was um very strong. I look at the crypto space at the moment with a lot of things that have been going on, the the Terra and the Luna. I think we're gonna have a lot of eyes on the space uh by the regulators in the future, which is one of the amazing strengths of this project. Um that we are a hybrid, the business model is not reliant on the market, so per se. Um so that really excites me. I think the product itself will sell itself. There is nothing like this in the world. That I've seen before. Um you know, your commitment as well, you wanna create a platform that pays instantly. And you did that. That is a first of its kind in the world as well. So look, I don't think it's really gonna be a challenge when you have something this good to work with. Um you know, who's gonna say no?
We're doing the hard, we're doing the the hard way. We walk the talk. Okay, thank you, Amanda. Thank you for all the support. And we're gonna mute you down and we're gonna bring in Shelley from U S. Uh Shelley is a connection of Amanda and she has done some great work for us in America. Hello, Shelley.
Hi, everybody. Hello, Andreas.
Hey, how are you today?
I couldn't be better. My heart is just exploding. I've got my adrenaline pumping. I'm so, so excited. For everything you shared and what we've gotten to see and just all the new developments. It is immense. And what a true honor it is to be here. And I'm just overwhelmed. Like, this is the most exciting project.
Okay, very cool. Now I want you and Stian, you can explain together uh a little bit. So you have been into a lot of meetings and you have. Go into the details for us.
Absolutely. Well, so uh we have.
But if Shelley just introduces her, because she's been in this space for a long time and she's super connected.
Um yeah, I I absolutely, I'd love to introduce myself. So if you guys don't know me, my name is Shelley LeBach. I am in New Jersey, so I'm in the U S. I got into crypto very early, bought my first Bitcoins from Charlie Shrem uh before it was even a dollar. So I didn't really know what I had my hands on, got rid of most of it and then came back a few years later to move what was left over into a wallet. And realized I had made a tremendous uh mistake. Because what was left over was just a little bit of dust and it was worth thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. And I was like, I gotta jump in. I need to understand this. So what I did at the time was really just get around all the people that were creating this technology. And um obviously, uh I followed my best friend in to strategically how he placed himself in the space. He was ha, uh he was sponsoring hackathons. I I just followed his lead. He was convincing me I needed to go into consulting. Because I had really been in this space for so long. I ended up opening my own boutique uh development company with a couple of their co-founders. And since it was a startup, you know, I had to wear many hats. That was, you know, building out the educational resources. It meant, you know, doing the in-house fund to get projects seeded. Um I was doing strategic partnerships. I was going to all the events, sponsoring the hackathons. I was all over the place and I was very fortunate to get around some of the best people in the industry. And in doing so, um you know, it was quite a uh quite quite a good experience. Now, I was introduced to this by Amanda about eight months ago. Saw how beautiful the project was. I didn't have an exit strategy for my own company at the time. Um but I was really looking for something that would just bring me back to life and ignite that fire, something that would really allow. You know, everyday people to participate without all the obstacles coming into crypto. There's so many, especially in the U S for us. Um there's a lot of choke points. So I.
We have to be a little bit short, Shelley.
I'm sorry, you got it. So I saw that the web two to web three integration was just super smart, super beautiful, well laid out. Um brought it to a couple uh crypto executives and I won't name names, but they're massive. Some of them even took positions within the uh organization. Um lent out their Wall Street analysts to me so I could do a nice thorough deep dive. And I was blown away. You guys, I pulled at every thread and Andreas knows. Everything they showed me was just so transparent. And so from there, um you know, we started sharing it with our community and everybody knows somebody. So we started having meetings with a lot of these pro athletes, celebrities, people with organizations that are tied to. Massive, massive people. Um everybody knows household names like, you know, I I won't, I won't mention. Because Alex has been just available night and day to jump on these calls with really incredible people. These are the types of people we we want involved. And every single one of them we have shown this to, has been just chomping at the bit. Wants to get in, wants, you know, know, to know how to take advantage of this early entry, how to help us build this. I mean, Alex can tell you, we have seen nothing but an absolute great response on our side. And it just, it just pumps us up every single time we jump on a call. And I have to thank you, Alex, because you have been available um at all times for, you know. Whatever I've, whatever I've thrown at you. So I'm gonna cut it short because I know time is of the essence here. But massive, massive things are coming. So many athletes.
It's gonna be a good uh autumn hunting now. The close of one of these this autumn. That's cool. Even in bloody America. That's very good. Okay, Shelley, thank you for all your support and everything. And we catch up later, okay?
Thank you, yes.
I think we're gonna bring in uh before we, Magnus, we ask Stefan to come in here. And talk a little bit about the German market. Hello, Stefan.
Hello, Andreas. I'm fine. Yeah, it's it's very good. I'm happy to be here. And uh maybe you're allowed to speak in German to the uh partners that join this call. Yeah, because I know they are all waiting and they are all happy. And yeah, I'll be delighted to uh bring the. Our project, our baby, yeah, uh to the to the top of the world. And so I think that a lot of you, yeah, I think naturally total proud of what has happened. And in September, it's lost. Yeah, with the football world championship, yeah, in Qatar, it's then in the fact, große schritte machen. And alles, was heute sehen durften, ist natürlich wirklich großartig, weil wir ja so mit andere Möglichkeiten haben, ja neue Partner zu begeistern. Ja, und all diejenigen, die im Endeffekt sagen, Mensch, ja, wie ging denn die Reise bisher, ja nach vorne, die sehen, ja wo wir heute landen. Aus diesem Grund, um so I have to say, thank you very much to all of you, yeah, to build everyday new teams and support them. And so I give you back.
We are grateful for all your support and your diligence, follow-up on your teams. And so how are you? Uh looking into the German market at the moment, now we are moving on the product side?
Uh the German market is uh very interesting because there are a lot of people with a lot of money. And they are uh uh looking, yeah, to our project and uh want to see that that's the uh the the thing the Germans always do. But I'm in contact with them and uh so I think they are happy. And uh every message.
Very good. We have a lot of Germans there, so uh that's perfect. We can have separate things in German. Actually, I'm trying, not today.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Stefan. We're gonna bring in uh Magnus from Jakarta. He's Swedish. Hey, Magnus.
Hello, yes. Hey, hey.
Good morning.
You're back, bro.
That's a speaking wish.
I'm good, Scully, yes.
So how are you? You are in Jakarta now?
Uh I'm in Bali at the moment. Yes, still things to to sort out here. Uh just met with one of the football guys.
So you are heading our Indonesian desk sort of. And you have employed way too many people in my mind. And you're doing a lot of good work down there. And you are creating a massive content base. Also particularly for the top five clubs in Indonesia. And I want you to reflect a little bit about. Uh the football market in Indonesia and the size of it. Because uh sitting here in the Nordics. Or even in the Americas or in Germany, you maybe think of Indonesia as a small little pound. Even if it's the most third biggest country. So could you enlighten us a little bit? Because we we gave you some homework and I know you've done it.
Yes, okay. So I've been out here as an entrepreneur, I'd say, uh for twenty years over. And got to realize how unbelievably massive this market is. Uh once you get in here, you are set forever, basically, different, it doesn't matter which industry. But just to give you a few a few numbers here, uh Indonesia is depending on who you ask. But it's going to be the fourth largest economy in the world. Some say twenty twenty-four, some say twenty thirty-five, et cetera. But it's happening and it's happening fast here. When it comes to people, uh the Indonesians are, I would say, quite crazy about the football. Just to again, give you, like, let's say, one of, we are working on the five, top five clubs here at the moment to to create these club games. Just one of them is one of the, uh it's called Bersib Bandung. It's one of the major cities here. They have twenty-two million fans, uh uh dedicated to the club. And it's it's a way of life for these people. We we come to football here.
We we only, we only, we only need two million of them to spend a dollar a day to bring the token to ten dollar.
Yeah, I think that's gonna happen quite fast, honestly. Because like you said earlier, and it's, believe it or not, I was actually interviewing the the. Director of the of the Football Association here. And and they did have a survey saying that. Actually, it was seventy million Indonesians spending fifty dollar a month on football in in one way or the other. Now, it's like mind-boggling numbers. Uh so many tend to forget about Indonesia as um. But remember, it's three, three hundred million people here, all football fanatics. From start, even when they start preschool, they join, uh for example, I talked about Bandung Club here. In Bandung, they call, they they, when they are in preschool, they join something, they call it boboto. It means that you are a supporter in the local dialect language that they have there. It means so, so then you are a supporter for life. And this follows, and it's a big traditional.
They're not for crazy numbers because so not only the volume, but also the ticket size, which is kind of surprising to me also when I heard about it yesterday. I was a little bit like, what? I know, I know. What? It's not the three in the statistics we know about. So anyway, you're doing a great job. Uh we wanna have a big focus in Indonesia. We're gonna do other countries in Asia. We are already, as Lou and Jason already are well-connected in Vietnam, Philippines and Japan. Uh we, uh I just got the message from Olivia, our Japanese head of uh head of head of Japan. He's been hindered, what do you call it? He had something with his connection. We couldn't join. He will join next time. So he's our head in Japan and he has more than ten thousand Japanese uh members under his uh umbrella. And he's doing a great, great job. He's commuting between Japan and Brazil. He's currently in Brazil. We have a a great meeting with him yesterday. Uh we also have, as you know, in our office here in Norway, we have Barra. He's a Japanese national. He works with us here in the headquarters. He's currently on vacation in in Tokyo and Yokohama, meeting some of the leaders also. And so we are nurturing, we are we are following up on our Japanese uh uh business contacts closely. And as soon as the Japanese border are open. And as soon as the Japanese border are open for travel, uh, me and Stian will, will go there and we will have events in Japan. We will also have events other places shortly, so that's, that's a lot of things, uh, going on. Okay, thank you, Magnus, for that. I'm gonna now, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna stop there with the, with the creator and we're gonna move a little bit further. So, uh, let's talk about the corporate thing and, um, I gotta bring up now Stian Andre and we're gonna have Warren, uh, coming in and we're gonna start discussing about, uh, finance, we're gonna discuss money and we're gonna discuss, uh, a little bit, uh, what we are planning. So Warren, hi, how are you?
Hi, Andreas, how are you, mate?
I'm good, I'm good. So, uh, Warren is our head of corporate and, uh, he's a British citizen from his, uh, birthplace. And, uh, yeah, but he's a world traveler. So Warren, can you, uh, as one of one of yourself, ahead of a quick, just a quick few sentences about your position and how you came into Super One?
Sure, um, so my background is actually in video games, uh, I have a bachelor's in science in computer video games. Um, first grade honors, one of the top fifty percent result of all, um, UK degrees, so it's a very, very high, quite prestigious, uh, grading, if you will. Um, I had a video game student in the UK, when I was, uh, younger in a previous life, I sold that and moved to China. Uh, discovered the power of blockchain when Ethereum was launched. Um, I've been in the crypto space professionally, I would say, um, for around two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Uh, we had various different projects, including a consultancy firm, we had a, uh, an house of development house. Um, so following the relative successes from that, I was lucky enough to give a TED Talk in two thousand eighteen on blockchain data security, um, which was not the smartest move to do in China, telling people that you can control your own data. So the Chinese government was not happy about that, so very quickly after I moved to Vietnam for a few years after, um, and then moved to Bali, Indonesia, where I met, um, Stian Andre and Stian Alex, um, where I semi-retired. Um, and it was actually one of your other investors, um, that pulled me in and made introduction to producing through Gillage. Um, and after seeing the project, I was like, this is, this is incredible, you know, I, I, how do I join? Um, you know, I'm, I'm here to help you guys in, in any form, any capacity. So because, um, like Shelley, you know, we've been in the space for several years now, um, kind of OGs, if you will. Um, we've developed a very large network, so what I'm introducing to Super One is essentially, um, the various components required to maintain, um, you know, not only the price point, um, but also the infrastructure for a token. So this includes different things like the exchange patterns, um, various things like journalists, various things like market makers, for example, and then everything that kind of falls in between, um.
I wanna, I wanna stop you, I wanna stop you a little bit more.
Sorry, sorry.
Just wanna say to the people that, uh, a lot of people ask about the listing at Goku Market and, uh, uh, I'm happy to announce that we have closed the agreement with Goku Market because they went down the drain. They, they failed a lot in their operation due to the turmoil in the markets, they were having issues with their banking, uh, partner. So, uh, we agreed with them mutually to, uh, to just walk away from the agreement and they paid us back our deposit, so that's, that's good, very good guys. They have a good relation with the people, but they were unfortunately a victim of the market, so, but that doesn't hinder us, uh, Warren.
No, I, I think it's safe to say the negotiations with three of the top ten exchanges, um, are going very well. Um, and we should be able to announce some pretty cool things in the near future. Um, I think to say the interest in Super One in this very drastic bear market kind of shows the merits that Super One has, right? Um, the investors are still chasing us, the exchanges are still chasing us, and I think that really stands to the potential of Super One. Cause when you've got these crypto V E firms, you know, looking at a potential benefit of, you know, one to three years, um, and they're still chasing, you know, the ability to buy the super token. I think that really stands, you know, towards the merits of the team and the effort that, that everyone's pulling together. Um, so it's gonna be really striking what we can achieve in the next year.
From my perspective, I think that the business model we have is different, is thorough and is sustainable. So while you have.
Sustainable is the key, yeah.
Yeah, because you have all the DeFi projects and let's tell a little story, because stories always cool. I was at the Paris Blockchain Week just before, uh, Easter, I met with Alex Pacinski, the founder of Celsius Network. At that particular time, he was a keynote speaker, he had twenty-four billion dollars under management, asset under management. AMU, I, I was amazing, he was a keynote speaker, the project Celsius was really the top of the pops, okay? I know him back from twenty seventeen when he started Celsius, I met him in Las Vegas, we were partying. He's a really intelligent guy, the guy invented the IP telephone that, uh, that we use on WhatsApp every day, he's a really smart guy. He grew his company from eight to eight hundred people in a few years, twenty-four billion under management. Then came the crypto winter or whatever we can call it and these algorithms were not working in his favor anymore and he, he's a smart mathematician. And what happened now is bankrupt, three months later, it stopped, they have a bankruptcy. They were only three point something billion dollars instead of having under management. So this tells me that the market has been very brutal for many, many projects, because I know him and I, I kind of know his, I know his knowledge. And I also happen to be, I was in United States for a couple of weeks, uh, a week ago. And I went to, uh, on the Fourth of July, I was invited to, uh, a guy that's named the godfather of crypto. And we were there and I was there with, uh, with a lot of crypto influencers, crypto investors and they all really, first of all, they like, uh, what, what they hear about Super One, because like, like, uh, this guy's saying, it's an accomplishment, what you have done so far. And now going to the next level, uh, it's cool, but, uh, there is a lot of people struggling out there today and I'm, I'm happy to say that we are on a good note and we are actually doing, uh, I think, you know, sometimes I have in my past, I have done very good when others do bad, if you understand. So, uh, I think we are into, we've been through, I won't say hardship, but we've been working and working and expanding and expanding. And one of the main corporate, uh, challenges we have is not resources or financial resources, it's human resources. Is to get people, to get the right people to work with us and to actually educate them and to actually get them up to speed and to get them to produce things. So I'm happy that you are on board, Warren, I've been for some months now and that you are spearheading the the, the, the corporate financing, talking to these exchanges. Could you elaborate a little bit about the, uh, trading solution that we have, uh, contemplated that we discussed a lot? Hello, Warren?
Yes, sorry about that, I was, sorry, I was muted. Yeah, so we're actually speaking, um, well, well, we actually were speaking to several of the market leaders in terms of market making solution. Um, we're closing the deal now with what we feel is the strongest partner that's able to develop several custom solutions for us, right? Because that, as you, as you pointed out very, very correctly, it's all about the sustainability, right? Um, Super One is one of those projects that comes around, you know, maybe once in a lifetime. So we really need a partner that could really facilitate a lot of what we're trying to achieve, you know, the very new the kind of, um, groundbreaking, you know, solutions, uh, we're developing, we needed someone to.
Well, just, uh, just, uh, to, 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 to say to the, to the people on the call here that you, we know, when, when you have fifty thousand tokens, there's always someone who wants to sell, someone who wants to buy. But we need to protect everyone, so we need to protect the company and every member. And that's why we have, we actually come up with a very delicate solution or very, very perf, very nice solution, you can explain about it, Warren.
Yes, so when you have kind of large crypto investments, you know, coming in buying a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand tokens, what, what's very important is that we protect, you know, the kind of price point and we protect the rest of the community. So what we don't want to do is essentially someone to come in, buy a large amount of tokens and essentially buy and sell those, you know, putting a lot of buy or sell pressure on the price point. So what we're working with, um, this market making solution partner is essentially dispersment tools and staking tools. So individuals, you know, resales as well as crypto whales can essentially deposit large amounts of tokens, you know, whether that be one token, whether it be fifty tokens, whether it be five hundred tokens, whether it be a hundred thousand tokens. And then what we're able to do is essentially disperse those over a seven-day, fourteen-day, twenty-eight-day period to maintain the price point of the token. So as the price dips below or as the price rises above a certain price point, it doesn't have any major effect, which is what, you know, as you said before about sustainability, right? It's not about volatility. We're not here to make the super token jump from one dollar to ten dollars overnight, right? We wanna keep it a very sustainable, a very steady price point, and that is not an easy thing to do. So through these dispersment tools, we keep it very fair for the community, very fair for the investors and very fair for the players of Super. Um, I think that's, you know, very important as we talk about kind of circulation management of the token and, you know, maintaining this price point.
For me, liquidity is a religion, I mean, that's what we need to do to have perfect liquidity. Okay, thank you, Warren, for enlightening us, now we're gonna have, uh, Stian Andre coming in. Ask to unmute and, hi, Stian.
Hello, Andreas.
You're in Norway too?
I am back in Norway for a short time, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, what can I, what can I say? Uh, we bring Warren, um, on the team, he's doing a great job. I don't know how much more information I can give from the corporate side, but, uh.
I want you to, to predict the price on the token. No, what I want to hear from you, Stian, because you mean, a little bit, uh, uh, I mean, while you have your, your, your name brother focusing a lot on the creators and the, the teams in U S, you have also been instrumentally working with some larger investors and how we're gonna do that and how we structure it. You work with me, you work with, with, with the team. And, uh, we, we kind of have backed a little bit because of a lot of things, but, uh, uh, yeah. How do you see the next few months?
Let me expand a little bit on, on that, so I, I, I think that people on the call now understand that even if we don't release a lot of information all the time, we are busy and we're working hard and, uh, there's a lot being going on beyond, be, behind the curtains. As, uh, Warren, uh, perfectly says, Super One is a token, even if it's in the bear market, that, uh, catch a lot of, um, interest from the, you know, the, the people that are investing in, um, in more tokenist business, but, uh, also this business more on the equity side. So we have been working, uh, with several investors that are, you know, open to uh, work with us, invest in us when we move forward, we're working currently on the pitch decks, we're finishing up with that. So as I see it, I'm very positive, you, you know, the market is quite heavy these days, but, uh, I think the difference with, with Super One is the, you know, the utility we have. People see the use case, they see the product and they see also the utility that we have in the.
And the, I, I would like to add one thing that I forgot earlier is the use case of super token. While we are standing with the Phantom Metaverse, it's gonna be, use cases right, left and center, it's gonna be tense.
Yeah, yeah, but the utility is, is, is great and that is basically, you know, when, when, when markets tank like they do now, we get flush outs, right? So all the hypes and all the bullshit companies, they disappear and it's good for, for all of us, that's how market works. But, uh, we are still here, we didn't.
It's not, it's not our first move, eh?
No, and we didn't build, and this is very important that people understand, that we didn't build Super One in, in a hype, in the bull market. This company is completely built outside of the market, we will capitalize and be there for the next bull run, but we, we don't need the bull market to exist. So utility is, is, is the key and I, and I guess that.
Can you give a little bit information about the major deals going on in Dubai?
We don't wanna disclose, uh, names, right? But what I can say, I, you know, I'm, I'm the potato in the company, I'm working with Shelley and, and, and Alex also a lot on the call. I can confirm that the interest from, you know, uh, major, major players, um, is there, they are blown away of Super One, what we have done. Uh, the deals that we have going on in, in in Dubai is also massive, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say.
We don't need to say more, I'm scared, wanna go there, I'm afraid.
No, but yeah, I'm, I'm super pumped and super excited and I, um, we will only, you know, ex- excel from here, we have so much going.
We had to work hard, it's not an easy, easy route, it's, uh, it's a lot of work, we start five o'clock every morning and push till midnight. That's what we do. So, thank you, Warren, thank you, Stian Andre and, uh.
Thank you.
Stian Andre, I mean. And thank you, everyone, uh, I think we are coming to an end of this, uh. Any questions, you can always reach out to our help desk, they are very, uh, diligent and, um, I will thank all of you for your support and how we move forward. Now it's gonna be an interesting time, I know there are tons of questions about this and that and everything, we don't take those now. I just wanna say one thing, big things have small beginnings, like Lawrence of Arabia said. And, uh, we are not very small anymore, we are growing. I'm managing more than forty people on a day-to-day basis and takes, takes a little bit of time and take effort. Uh, are we gonna grow it to probably hundred people before Christmas? And we're gonna launch, we're gonna be successful and, uh, Stian, Alex, are you still with us? You haven't fallen asleep?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you for, for everybody who's still here and we, we, we have been taking some time, but it's much, much better. What, what we are doing now, uh, so you don't know about the partnerships and everything, this, this will do a boost really good. And we will be better now to start doing this, this tone all often and go out with, with, with info and all this. Uh, but, but there's a lot of cool stuff and I think when we start rolling out the partnerships and all this, I think this will explode because there is no gaming out there with what we are coming with now, nothing in the crypto space.
That's really exciting.
Andreas, just, uh, in the end, do you, do you wanna touch base a little bit on the partnership we're doing, I, you know, um, Stefan mentioned, uh, KPMG, you wanna do this on this call just briefly?
What do you mean, the KPMG deal?
Yeah.
Uh, that I already done.
Hey, hey, it's all, totally.
We are, we are, we are, but we are, we are.
You fill, you fill out then.
What I can say is that we are, we are, we are in close cooperation or close, uh, dealing with Ripple and, uh, we're working with Ripple. Ripple are really good, uh, technology, but we, I see some shortcomings in U S, but, uh, we all are waiting a little bit to see the situation, but, uh, we are discussing with Ripple, we, we have multiple partners now and, uh, uh, getting interest, getting the financial resources is not the main thing anymore. Uh, the, the main thing is to, to grow the company and get the product out there and to really find very healthy and, uh, cost-free, cost-free, uh, uh, marketing channels. I mean, we are not coming in the front door to Google and say, hey, we're gonna spend hundred million dollar on marketing. They're coming in the back door to the big sites, we're building it from fan clubs, from leagues, from, from different. We actually don't want too many of the, the high-profile partnerships at this point in time. We want the, the low profile, the masses, the, the, what you call the, the, the real, uh, dedicated fans, we want them. Those people, though, they're gonna, gonna play the game and they're gonna be our, our, the engine on, on our platform, they're gonna keep coming back for more. So satisfying the brain or the dedicated player is our primary objective, everything else doesn't really matter. That's why we created this, okay, they, they use Phantom Metaverse, let's call it virtual community or call it a gated by community, whatever you wanna call it. It's to keep people, is the, is it called hamster wheel, is to keep people coming back, doing more and more and more and get food, brain food, get, uh, uh, get the different kind of experience points, get the kind of trophies, all that sort of, uh. Alex created all this, so we spent months and months of, 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 outlining it. Now the developers are sweating in forty, fifty degrees in India fixing. And, uh, KPMG coming in the door, I already started, we'll verify everything. We have verified things, everything we do is on blockchain, so we have every transaction, we have, uh, hash, hash, uh, links on everything. We can do everything, so yeah, just a lot of work, just a lot of work and that's good. So, thank you, everyone, for being here, we have been more than three hundred people. Uh, we have given a lot of information, this recording will be distributed sometime tomorrow, takes time for Zoom to do it because now we are off, we are in the office, I'm in the office here, it's Saturday and it's July and it's getting late or it's getting dinner time, so thank you, everyone, and, uh, we are looking for.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. I hope to see you soon.
Really, really amazing autumn and uh so get your, your boots tied up and start running because this is gonna be cool. We're gonna do everything to succeed together. Thank you, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the team too.
Our heads and teams for speaking and sharing and everything. And uh, hopefully next time we will have a little bit of Japanese talk also. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.